When you're ready, Shayla.
Thank you, Katrina. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Youth Lead Candidates Forum for the Richmond City Council. Again, welcome to our space. Happy Indigenous People Day. I want to share with you all our mission and purpose for this event and to thank our co-sponsors. The Safe Return Project mission is to end mass incarceration and to re-enfranchise those that have been disenfranchised by the criminal legal system. Safe Return Project cares about our young people affected by criminalization. We understand how powerful, transformative, and impactful it is when others decide to invest in and care about our youth in our communities. To raise Richmond youth voices, Safe Return Project is coming together to lead and engage the Contra Costa community about upcoming elections based on experiences our young people have faced and learned about and learn about possible solutions directly from candidates. We want to thank our co-sponsors Lift Up Contra Costa, Help Be Contra Costa, Contra Costa Immigrant Rights Alliance, Richmond Our Power Coalition, and Reimagine Richmond, who's also helping with our Zoom chat. We would also like to start off with some candidate ground rules. This forum is intended to support open and respectful exchanges of ideas. This is not a candidate's debate. Each candidate will have a maximum of two minutes to provide an opening statement outlining their election priorities. We will use the timer to make sure everyone has the same allotted time. The moderator will ask one question at a time and allow each candidate to speak. Each candidate will have an opportunity to answer each question with a maximum of one minute. Again, we will use the timer to make sure everyone has the same amount of time to respond. Time limits on statements, questions, and answers will be enforced by the moderator during the forum. Remember, this is a youth-led candidates forum. Aggressive, demeaning, discriminatory, or otherwise hurtful language and actions will not be tolerated from candidates or our audience members. The moderator may ask individuals acting in such a way to leave the forum. The moderator may also intervene in any of these if any of these ground rules are not followed. And for time's sake, we also will be putting in the questions in the chat. So if you didn't hear the question that you've read out, please feel free to look at the chat. I will turn it over to Carlos for introductions.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Carlos. Twenty-three years of work at Safe Return. I'm organizing and mentor. And I work closely with these young kids to get put together this forum. I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. My name is Cedric. I am fifty years old. I go to Richmond High School. And I am here today because I have concerns about public safety and housing in my community.
What's up? Good evening. My name is Brian. I'm sixteen years old. I used to go to Richmond High. And I am here today because I have concerns about schools and food security in my community. I pass it back to Carlos.
Thank you, guys. What I will start with is the candidates' bios. Can y'all hear me clearly? I'll start with the candidates' bios and then opening statements. So who will start with is Caesar. Caesar is a product of Richmond with the experience, vision, empathy, and perspective of city council. He is dedicated to helping and empowering our residents as president and founder of Hilltop District Homeowners and Stakeholders Association and founder and former president of Hilltop District's Neighborhood Council. He concentrated on quality of life issues, including public safety and city services. As an elected official, president of West County Wastewater District, serving part of Richmond, working to provide clean water and protect public health. As chair of West County Sierra Club, with years of experience, he fights to improve air quality and protect our environment. He is the founder and president of Richmond Rainbow Pride. He also serves on the Board of Grib Family Shelter, providing assistance to unhoused families and Contra Costa Community College Foundation, increasing higher learning opportunities for young people. Mr. Zepeda, make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Carlos, and thank you, everyone. Good evening. My name is Caesar Zepeda. And go Oilers. I heard a couple of Richmond High School attendees or students here. So I also attended Richmond High School. It's class of ninety-eight. That was a long time ago. But I remember being in high school and one day wanted to grow up and be involved in the community. So here I am today, and hopefully I will see one of you taking one of these forums in a couple of years as you run for maybe office or you run for something to represent your community with your vision. So thank you all for putting this together. As you had mentioned, again, my name is Caesar Zepeda. And Hilltop District or District Two, which incorporates Hilltop, Artchester, North Richmond, Shieldweed, Santa Fe, Point Richmond, some of the Marina Bay. It's a very diverse with income and different housing types area with the majority of the big businesses, including Chevron, Amazon, Sims Metals, amongst others. So this district is very diverse, and we need someone that's going to be able to represent this district that has a knowledge of this district, that has worked in every corner of this district. But also, just as importantly, that has worked all around the community. And I believe that I am that candidate that has worked around and understands the needs of the various communities around Richmond. You will be elected, hopefully, to District Two, but I will also be representing the whole city, understanding the issues, not just those in District Two, but those in other districts as well. I want to be able to uplift Richmond. I want to be able to work with everyone at the city council. Whether I agree with those individuals or not, I want to be able to bring everyone to the table and figure out what is best for the city. I also want to be able to work with other cities and agencies, like the West County Unified School District, to, again, to be able to help uplift Richmond. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zepeda. Andrew Burt. Is there? Andrew Burt here. He confirmed, but he did not supply the biography in time. If he's here, you have two minutes to make your opening statement.
He's not with. He did not make it tonight, Carlos.
Thank you. Just checking. Now we'll read the District Three candidates' biographies, starting with Oscar Garcia. Good evening. Oscar Garcia. Everybody hear me good? Okay, cool. Oscar Garcia was born and raised in the Iron Triangle Neighborhood Central. Oscar's roots in District Three date back to mid nineteen fifty, nineteen fifties, when his grandfather, Austin Garcia, immigrated from Jalisco, Mexico, and settled here. He is a product of West Contra Costa Unified School District, graduating valedictorian of his class at John F. Kennedy High School and obtained a degree in chemical engineering from UC Berkeley. His decision to represent District Three is very personal to him. He began serving the Richmond community as a young child when he started volunteering at St. Mark's Catholic Church and was also student body president in high school. He has volunteered in many Richmond community programs, events, including the Cinco de Mayo Parade and Festival, Juneteenth, NAACP Families, Familias Unidas, Richmond Rotary, National Night Out, Consilio Latino, New Life Movement, John F. Kennedy High School Career Day, and Census 2020. Mr. Garcia, please make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for hosting tonight's event. I look to represent District Three, which includes central and south side Richmond. My family and extended relatives live here. I'm a first-generation son of Mexican immigrants. My dad has an eighth-grade education, and my mom has a third-grade education. I grew up in Richmond in the eighties and nineties, and so stats for people like me are not very good. My brother and most of my cousins have been incarcerated, but I worked hard and I made sure to graduate from Kennedy and eventually from UC Berkeley. And I'm now an environmental engineer at one of the top biofuels companies in the world. My priority now is to create a better Richmond for all my young relatives, nieces and nephews, and all residents here in Richmond. And I hope to be one of the first Richmond-born Latinos on the city council. I currently serve on the Community Police Review Commission and on the Iron Triangle Neighborhood Council. And based on that, I'm seeing that Richmond is at a crossroads, and we need the right leadership to move especially District Three in the right direction. My vision is to bring state funding so that Richmond can be a hub for renewable energy and sustainable forms of living. My plan is to reinvest in our communities, to clean up our streets, to prioritize public safety, to address homelessness humanely, and most importantly, to better serve our youth. So please consider voting for Oscar G. for District Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Oscar. Next is Doria Robinson. Good evening. Everybody can hear me? Okay, cool. Doria Robinson is a third-generation Richmond resident and executive director of local community-based organization. She was raised in a strong church community on Richmond South Side where her grandfather was the minister. For the past sixteen years, she has worked to build a community organization that now has a multimillion-dollar budget, employs fifty-four local residents, supports youth, provides healthy food to five hundred Richmond families each week. In two thousand twenty-two, Governor Newsom, Governor Gavin Newsom appointed her to the California State Food and Agriculture Commission as a first urban agriculture practitioner to serve on the commission. She is passionate about making the community a place where children and families can safely walk to school and parks where residents have a chance to work in well-paying, satisfying, well-paying, satisfying jobs and where everyone has access to shelter, health, and social service support they need to thrive and support their families. Mrs. Robinson, please make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I'm really excited to be here tonight. One of my great passions is working with young people. I do it every day. I think it's where Richmond's strength really lies. So my name is Doria Robinson. As you've heard, I'm running for city councillor in District Three. This is the district where I grew up. I grew up by Nevin Community Center. It's also where I raised my kids. It's where I currently live and have lived for most of my life. I want to say thank you to the Safe Return Project and all the other organizations who sponsored this event. Your collective work to support residents and strive towards justice in our communities is appreciated and is the, and the opportunity to speak and share my views tonight is really also appreciated. So as the only corporate-free candidate running in my district, my accountability is to residents and member-based organizations like yours. I won't be beholden to industries. I won't take my marching orders from petroleum companies. I will have an independent mind, and I will serve my community, the community that I was born and raised in. I believe I have both the skill sets and the community orientation to serve as a city council member. So over the last twenty years, I've been running an organization that has actually created jobs, not just talked about it, but actually created jobs for over fifty-eight youth currently. But over the past twenty years, that's hundreds of youth that have come through and, and, you know, made, helped made a better life, helped plop the road to new careers. My priorities are housing. I recognize the lack of housing is one of the biggest threats to people's well-being, and I believe there is more our city government can do to support both housed and unhoused residents. It's to grow the economy, it's to create healthy neighborhoods, and it's to prepare for crises like COVID and climate change. I'm passionate about making our community a place where children and families can safely walk, go to school, go to parks, and where residents can live. Thank you.
I'll see y'all here. Corky Bowes was reached out, but did not respond. He runs for District Three as well. Now moving on to District Four candidates. Is it Sohaila?
Sohaila.
Sohaila?
Yes.
Sohaila Banner was the seventh child of eighth born to to a mason and a housewife who didn't attend school. She immigrated to the U.S. in nineteen eighty-five. She started her education journey at a community college while working as a waitress on weekends and being in out pair during the week. Years later, she, she earned a PhD from UC Berkeley in electrical engineering and computer sciences, then accepted a job in the tech industry at Cal. She was a mother of two babies and noticed the unique challenges that women students were experiencing. So along with, along with three other mothers, she established the student-parent policy that allows a semester break for each child. This policy was a, was the first in the nation, and now is a statewide policy. It's an engineer, as an engineer, she worked as an analog IC design engineer and later as a civil servant at Caltrans. Her passion, however, has been activism and humans' rights. Dr. Banner, please make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I really appreciate it. I have lived in Richmond for twenty-five years. I have raised my two children, and with my husband, I have enjoyed the living year. As you mentioned, I am an immigrant who came here, made a home here, and I have worked very hard to make this community the home that I want to live in. I have worked for this community to bring the neighbors together, to have a voice, and I hope I can take it one step further to be their representative. My vision for Richmond is to improve public safety. I've been working and collaborating with our public safety teams is to have it a place that is inviting to more businesses and more residents. I will, I plan to work with Richmond Work Development, Workforce Development Board, and businesses to attract more businesses and have more revenue through taxes and hence provide more services to the community. We deserve to have better parks, safe and cleaner streets that are walkable and bikeable, and we need to have clean air, and we should protect the environment. And I promise to work on those issues, public safety, economic development, quality of life, and protecting the environment. Thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Banner. Next, I'll read the biography of Jamin Purcell.
Jamin.
Jamin.
Yeah.
Purcell. Okay. Good evening. Jamin Purcell was born in Alaska and raised in California by a hard-working, single mother. He has lived in Richmond's May Valley neighborhood with his husband and two dogs since two thousand and ten. He is proud to have started his higher education in California Community College System. He transferred to Cal State East Bay and graduated with a BA in polit, political science and a BA in philosophy. He also received a master in the science of law, science of the law, MSL from Pacific University McGeorge School of Law. He was a founding board member of Richmond Rainbow Pride and was on the May, on the May, on the May Valley Neighborhood Council for three years. Today, he earns a living as a small business owner and artist. His work has always been in the service of building community and making sure all voices of work are heard. He can't wait to meet more communities and hear their plans and dreams for Richmond. Mr. Purcell, please make your opening statement. You have two minutes.
Well, hi. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I also want to express how deeply honored I am to be able to speak to this group because Safe Return Project has been around for a very long time, and it's made a huge impact, especially in this community. I speak as a person who has had family that has been incarcerated. So you've given both of my bona fide, but let me tell you about why I'm running for city council. I'm running because when I was born in Alaska, it's cold, it's dark, it's cruel. And one of the things that you had to know is that you could work and trust with your neighbor. You didn't always have to get along with them, but you knew that if you got snowed in, if you got, if you had a moose, or if they generated one out, that you could rely on them to be there for you, and as well, they could rely on you to be there for them. And it's that shared understanding that shaped my political views and why, and I want to bring that value to this community so that we can be there for each other, and I want to bring that to our local government. So some of the things that as well that I've done through my educational processes, I've worked actually in the Richmond area using the skills that I've been learning. I was a volunteer working on Marc DeSagne's campaign when he ran for Congress. I worked in the state Capitol advocating for human rights with, through Equality California. And as well, I've also worked to try and get our local officials elected here when they've been facing insurmountable odds of tons and tons of money being thrown at them from the oil industry. So I feel like it was really important to have these like grassroots voices. And that's why I have been a corporate-free candidate this entire time, because I want to bring that value to city council. And I want people to know I'm only responsible, responsive to the residents.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. Now we'll move into the question portion. Youth will ask the questions, and each candidate will have one minute to respond. We have grouped them into districts, starting with District Two, then Three, and then Four. We will also put the questions in the chat for review. Now I'll pass it to Cedric.
What does public safety look like to you?
All right. Thank you, Cedric. So public safety encompasses a lot of different factors. One of them is police, fire, but also it includes our infrastructure. Lights, well-lit communities are going to have a decrease in crime. Public safety also includes sidewalks. Everyone knows that I'm very, very big on promoting sidewalks and accessibility. You don't want to be walking in the middle of the street without a sidewalk. So that is, again, different pieces that bring together what public safety is. And then in terms of policing, we want to make sure that we bring in more of that community policing, getting the individuals in the community involved with the conversation of police. How do we adequately hire more police officers in though, but they're part of the community that they're going to be representing? So thank you for that question.
Mr. Gash.
So my views on public safety are very simple, that we have a fire and police department that we can rely on when we need help or when we have an emergency. And one, when we don't see them or feel them when we don't need them, if that makes sense. It's very important for me that we don't encourage mass incarceration here in Richmond. Like I mentioned in my talk, my brother and most of my cousins have been incarcerated, have visited them in many institutions throughout the state, and they're still feeling the effects of that. And so it's very important for me that we focus on community policing that prevents mass incarceration so that our youth, like I said, especially our youth, view the police and the fire department as our city employees and not someone that we need to be afraid of.
It's Robinson.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree that public safety includes all the things that, that Caesar mentioned. But I also believe that, for me, public safety is that youth and families can feel safe to live in this community, to move around, to do the normal things you do every day without fear that something is going to happen to them. And that's something that we're striving to achieve. I believe the way that we can achieve that is to, one, continue what's working, things like ONS, youth preventative programs to help you have good things to do during the day. Some parts of community policing are super effective, but I also feel like we need to use data to make decisions. So often I hear people talking that just the numbers of police are going to keep crime rates down, and that's actually not true. As we've decreased numbers of police, our crime rates have been going down over the last twenty years. So there is no relation between the two, no direct relationship. I think we need to invest in prevention, and I think we need to listen to the community of what they need in order to feel safe. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Is it my turn now? I hardly can hear you. My apology.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, Dr. Banner.
Thank you very much for the question. So as you know, we live by Hayward Fault. We also live in a very high fire hazard severity zone, especially District Four. I am the president of West Contra Costa Fire Safe Council, and I established it specifically to address the issue of public safety. Public safety is the most essential service that municipalities need to provide to residents. We need to have safe evacuation routes for communities in case of a wildfire. We need to have egress routes. There are communities that if there is a wildfire, they don't have an additional route to escape. If the first route is If the first route is closed by the state law, it's the police officers who are responsible for evacuation in case of a public emergency. So we need to make sure we do have enough police officers to take care of that issue as well. I'm sorry, my time is up. Thank you.
Mr. Purcell.
Jamin, yeah. For me, public safety is primarily should be focusing on prevention. Things that work that I'm, I want to hit back on what Dory was talking about and what Caesar was talking about. It's about ONS, the Office of Neighborhood Safety. It's been nationally recognized for its ability to reduce violent crime here in Richmond. As well, the Youth Works Program, which is giving young people internships to learn job skills so they can enfranchise themselves. Those sorts of opportunities keep people out of looking for survival mode where criminality can start as well. We need mental health services and unhoused services that are not dedicated through the police. 10% of our, our 911 calls are for nonviolent mental health calls. These are things that like social workers could be able to help with. Now, I do think police and, and fire department are important, but like when I think of, of public safety, it's about prevention, not showing up after the fact.
Okay, my second question. You said what? Speaking of, all right. I got a second question. It's about housing. Housing security is a huge problem affecting low-income and working families. We are seeing rent and eviction increase. This makes it harder for kids to focus and succeed in school and for teachers to live in the community. Your voice can be influential in addressing housing affordability. If I like it, what would you do to decrease the number of unhoused youth? This is the better.
Thank you Cedric. So there's actually a bill that our Assemblywoman Wicks put up, which is AB 2011. And this to redevelop commercial zoned land into housing. We need to be able to build more housing. We're not going to be able to attack this housing insecurity until we have more housing. We want to make sure that we build affordable housing all over Richmond. And that we provide the opportunities for individuals to be able to access it. I support Measure P right now, especially with COVID. It's important that people are able to stay in their homes. I know that I've had residents reach out saying that even a small increase while they're not working or they're already retired has been, put a lot of stress on them. So one is building, the other one is keeping people in that affordable housing space. Especially with youth, maybe as providing some vouchers for the youth in their family. Seeing what programs we can create that encompasses the whole family unit. Thank you.
Mr. Garcia.
So how, housing is very important for not only me, but all families in Richmond. Having housing security is one of the most important things we, we can have. That's why I'm supportive of Measure P, which would cap rent increases to 3%. And I also am a big believer of needing to build as much housing in Richmond. I'm the only candidate that is supportive of such building efforts in Richmond. We need to build 12th in McDonald's and there's other lots. I'm the candidate that's been supported by those that want to build housing in Richmond. And so if, if folks would like to see more housing, I'm the candidate that's not only supported by those that want to build it. But I also have experience evaluating such projects as part of my work in the Iron Triangle Neighborhood Council. Thank you.
Based on obviously that many.
So I agree, housing is super important. And yes, we need to build more housing, especially low-income housing, not just market rate housing. Because as we all know, the market rate housing here in the San Francisco Bay Area is not affordable. Not affordable for most people who are working class. But I also think that there's other things that we need to do around housing. We need to make more transitional housing so that people who are living on the streets have a way to get into shelter. You know, temporary shelters more than emergency shelters, so different kinds of apartment building setups and things like that. They can get a chance to get back on their feet. I also think we need to work on making more opportunities for families to buy homes. Low-income housing is usually apartment-style housing or duplex, things like that. And often they're not the best situations for our families. And there are a lot of homes that could be bought, put into land trusts, made permanently affordable for families. I think we need to work on that as well. And then, yeah, I think those are my things I want to put forward. Thank you.
Thank you. If you look at the Richmond population, the majority of the people who live in Richmond work in other parts of the Bay Area. Because they cannot afford living in other areas. The solution to housing should be regional. I mean, other parts of the Bay Area, they have their workforce who live in Richmond. So they need to contribute to the housing issue in Richmond. I'm very much in support of Richmond Community Foundation that refurbishes houses and makes them livable and gives it to teachers and other people to live. But the specific question they're asking about the youth, housing is a human rights issue. I think among the unhoused population, families with children should have the first priority to housing, to have vouchers, transitional housing and permanent housing. That's one of the most important issues that the city needs to work with the county and the state to take care of.
I know, I mean, Mr. Purcell.
The rents are too dang high. Okay. We know right now that somebody working at a minimum wage job can't afford even a one-bedroom apartment anywhere in the U.S., let alone in the Bay Area. Our, like, young people can't even imagine owning a home to be even, be able to have children in. So we should be building up and not out. We should be having centrally located on the long transportation route housing. We have a number of empty lots that we could be building upon and we should be focusing our housing there as well. We should be making sure that there is significant community benefits components to these housing developments. Things that are making them actually affordable housing as opposed to just the affordable housing that they say, which is still oftentimes above what people are able to afford living in there. As well, we should not be building on toxic waste sites. That is something that is so important. We should be building on places where there is already single-family dwellers that could be done away with.
I would now pass it to Brian.
Good evening. My question is, along with housing, young people also face the challenge of food security. Please describe the inaction that you would take or have taken to promote food security in the city. Pass it to Mr. But. I mean, Mr. Zepeta.
Thank you, Brian. So as a member of the Contra Costa Community College, actually there we voted to create a pantry for our students where they have access to it all day and all week long to be able to come in as they wish to be able to take food home. Because we know of the food insecurities that they have at home. You can't study, you can't learn unless you've had those meals. I would also work with the school district to make sure that they continue providing free meals. Right now, it's already a law in California that the school district provide free meals while the student is at the school. But making sure they also have a dinner, making sure that we also have, that we don't have these food deserts. We know that by having food insecurities, that can then lead to other chronic illnesses like asthma, anemia, behavioral problems like hyperactivity, anxiety, aggression in school-aged children, et cetera. So working for, with the issue together with the community to provide more access.
Pass it to Garcia.
So as someone from Central, COVID was a really rough time from, from a food insecurity standpoint. Lots of people lost their jobs and suddenly they didn't have the money or the means to feed people, or their fam, feed their family. And so I volunteered from handing out food at Richmond Powell every couple of days to hundreds of thou, or tens of thousands of families during COVID. I've supported the Bay Area Rescue Mission over the years and various programs, including the building of their shelter for women and children. And I also fundraised a lot among friends to support college students during COVID who weren't getting, who didn't have the housing and/or support that they were getting from their universities. So that they had emergency funds. So students at Contra Costa College especially benefited from that.
Now pass it to Ms. Robinson.
Yeah, so over the last 20 years, most of my work has been built around food, building food security here in Richmond. We have major food deserts throughout all of our low-income communities. I have worked to transition vacant lots to community gardens. To the point where we now serve 500 families every week through the organization I work with, Healthy Food Boxes. We've also taken steps to make sure, to work on a statewide level, to make sure that school lunches will be free for all, for all kids in, in public school. There's a whole initiative around that that we've been working on. And also that we're improve the quality of the food served in those lunches so they're actually edible and healthy. I think there's a bunch of other things we can do. We've been also working with county health department to make sure that we can do veggie prescriptions to people with chronic illness. So instead of getting drugs, you can actually get fruits and vegetables that can help people improve their diabetes, their heart disease and things like that for free as a part of their medical prescription. So lots of things we can do around food security and have done.
All right, thank you. Now I'm gonna pass it to Dr. Bennett.
Thank you. I strongly believe that it is the responsibility of a school, city, county, the government, basically local government on larger scale for food security. The schoolchildren as well as college students should be provided free food, not only during the school, but also on weekends, holidays and during the summer. The process for applying for food coupons should be a lot easier. Their dignity should not be insulted during the process. I have the experience that poverty somehow is tied to the level of dignity for humans. Unfortunately, this society shouldn't be that way and I strongly in support of basic universal income. It should become a law at some point because it's a basic necessity for all. We shouldn't have poverty to the level that food is a question.
All right, thank you. Now, now I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Purcell. You got two minutes.
One minute. I don't see the clock. So food security is something that we need, really need to be fighting for here in Richmond. And in particular, I, I, I want to really celebrate what Doria has been doing. And as well, there's a number of things that we should be doing as she had already been indicating. Things like being able to, if we can't get a grocery store in these food deserts, we should be creating the grocery store from the city level. So as well, we should be using ARPA funds to be able to help get across the language and technological barriers that some of these smaller markets have to being able to get SNAP and food assistance programs into those places because that's how we can make sure that there's going to be fruits, vegetables, meats, grains in those local markets. We should be making sure as well as what's done at the state level for, for children to have food for schools during school. But we also need to make sure that everyone in a household is being fed.
All right, thank you. My next, my next question is, what is your plan to bring more resources to our community and schools? I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Zepeta.
All right, thank you, Brian. What I want to be able to do is work with our surrounding communities and agencies. Right? We're not going to be able to uplift Richmond by itself. We have to be able to create partnerships with the state of California, with our county, with our surrounding cities. You mentioned the school district. The school district encompasses several cities around. So to be able to lift up all of our students, not just those in this, inside of the city of Richmond, but lifting up everyone, we got to be able to partner. Being able to bring in more businesses and that we can have more tax revenue, but also jobs available to students like yourselves or young adults and just about anybody. I've been able to create trades programs that for the individuals, if they don't want to go into a four-year university, they can go into the trades, provide those opportunities that way. But we have to be able to provide more in Richmond. We are full of opportunities. We have to be able to take advantage of those and be able to bring our community to take, to take those pieces out. Be able to use them to uplift themselves. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Garcia.
Yeah, so my vision for Richmond is to make it a hub for renewable energy, to make it a leader in the state. There's a lot of state money right now and it's, a lot of it is destined for black and brown communities like Richmond. So I want to bring all of these state funds or as many, as much of them here to Richmond to drive that energy transition and to have that work be performed by Richmond folks, like Richmond youth. I want to create more pipelines for these jobs. And that's why I'm supported by the major unions and the major construction companies in the area. Because they know that I'm the person who has the experience and the know-it-all to make it happen. Because at the end of the day, like the last question, there wouldn't be any food insecurity if folks had a good paying jobs. And that's why I, that's what I will focus on primarily here for Richmond.
All right, thank you. I'm gonna pass it to Ms. Robinson now. One minute.
Great. So I think my work over the last, you know, 20 years has really shown us that definitely our problems are rooted in the economy. We need to grow our economy in Richmond. We need to make it so that we're not dependent on one industry, the petroleum industry. But actually have a lot of different sustainable industries coming here, creating jobs here. We also, yeah, we can do a much better job of partnering, getting state money. There's a lot of state grants available right now. There's a lot of federal grants available right now. We could actually partner better with the local nonprofits. We're connecting with foundations and donors. They're bringing in millions of dollars to support nonprofit work. But we could coordinate those efforts so that we can eliminate food deserts, not just service or work in a small way. I think that by partnering, by working together, by working creatively and by building up local business and local economies, that's how we win. That's how we bring the resources we need to our schools and our community.
All right, thank you, Ms. Robinson. Now I'm gonna pass it to Dr. Bennett.
Thank you very much. So I have two plans. Number one, we live by a major university, University of California, one of the best in the world. I graduated from UC Berkeley and it's a shame that it's sitting right next to Richmond without having any mentorship program. So I will work very hard to make sure there is a mentorship program between UC Berkeley students and high school students and college students of Richmond. Second, I will work for a mentorship, making mentorship like a writer's coach program easier between community members and our schools. There's a huge disconnect. We don't have as much volunteership as we needed. Third, the, with the businesses, from Chevron to small businesses, they need to have apprenticeship programs for the, thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Bennett. All right, thank you, Dr. Banner. Banner, and I'm gonna pass it to Mr. Perse.
Thank you. Well, so two parts to this. How are we going to support our community? We need to focus on the Green New Deal, the Blue New Deal, and a just transition. We need to be bringing in jobs that are going to be environmentally sound and are going to provide longstanding careers as well. We should really be investing in the youth works program. The city already has job training and placement for Richmond Youth Works, and we should be utilizing that further to put them within city positions as well because those are good union jobs that are going to give longstanding careers and great benefits. That's how we are going to allow the people to become wealthy within city Richmond and be able to allow them to thrive and be able to buy houses and everything like that. And that just moves the movies, the money through our community, which increases the wealth of the community. How we provide it to schools as well is just being having those wraparound programs that measure you will be able to provide through our Parks and Recs Department and through other educational programs as well as the Grants Department to be able to pull money down from the state and federal level to help go towards our schools.
All right, now I'm gonna pass it back to Shayla.
All right. Thank you, thank you. We're gonna now invite our candidates to do closing statements. Carlos, you want to lead?
I thought we had the online questions moderated. Okay, yeah. So the closing statement. Maybe doing two minutes each, and I'll start in the same order. Closing statement, Mr. Zepeda, please begin.
Perfect. Thank you again for everyone for putting this event together and allowing us to be able to listen to your questions and concerns because you are going to be the future. And I hope that one day I'm going to see you on this side of the Zoom where you are running for office and you are helping lead our community. But for now, you are going to have a choice between the candidates that are on the ballot today. In the next 29 days, we are going to know who's going to be leading our community. I am the candidate who will fight to help uplift all of Richmond, not just District Two. We have six districts, but we have to remember it is one Richmond. I'm going to be working to bring everyone to the table to find solutions, figuring out where we don't agree, what we do agree on, and how we can move forward to bring the best to our city. Those that know me know that I am persistent and I will not give up. I have worked in every community of Richmond. I have empathy and I am going to be leading with empathy. I'm pragmatic and I think outside the box. And most importantly, I do not ever have any conflicts of interest. I am endorsed by our state comptroller, Betty Yee, our state treasurer, Fiona Ma, every mayor in our surrounding cities from El Cerrito, Pinoz, and Pablo, as well as Richmond residents all over Richmond, and former elected officials to Richmond City Council, Maria Ramontes, John Marcus, Joel Myrick, among others. I want to be able to help Richmond restart our economic development engine to provide those jobs and those opportunities for everyone. Again, remember, we have six districts, but we have one Richmond. I hope to be able to earn your vote this November. And as a youth, if you want to get involved in any campaigns, you want to come up to Hilltop, let me know, or Deport Richmond or anywhere in between my district, I would love to be able to help mentor the future leaders of our community. So thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Zepeda. Now for District Three, Mr. Garcia, you have two minutes for your closing statement.
Yeah, thank you very much for hosting. You guys did all a very good job. So I'm very proud to see all of you active civically. We need that more in the community. So like I started, I, I see myself as a kid from Central. My parents, my little nieces and nephews all live here, and that's my priority. I don't have any other priorities but to serve my community. I don't have any special interests funding my, my campaign. I have a little grassroots campaign where close family and friends are funding my campaign. So when I'm out, i- if I'm lucky to represent Ri- Richmond, I will be looking out for everyone's best interests, which means trying to bring in some tax revenue so we can make a difference, create some jobs and, and help everyone feel safe. And also to help support our youth by creating various programs that will be beneficial to, to our youth. So please join the East Bay Times, DA Diana Beckton, the mayors of El Cerrito, Richmond, San Pablo, most of the neighborhood council leaders such as Linda Whitmore, Doris Mason, Kate Sibley, as well as the West County Democratic Club, the Contra Costa Young Democrats. And I'm the only candidate that has been following the issues and that truly has a plan. My focus is all of the youth and, and I also do not have a conflict of interest such as the other candidates do. So please vote for Oscar G. for District Three. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Robinson, you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who put this together tonight, especially thank you to the youth. I'm always excited to see who's coming up next. Who's going to be the next ones who are leading our city. So I'm really proud to have the opportunity to possibly represent this district. This is the district that I've done most of my work in over the last 20 years. I live in it, I breathe in it. My grandfather was, came here. I'm just so excited to be able to really fight for this community that really has not had a voice before district elections. It's been really exciting to knock on people's doors and really listen to what their concerns are and really have a chance to, to make a plan to bring those concerns to city council. So for me, Richmond's a city of working families. For over 20 years, my work has been centered around serving families and empowering youth. And I'm proud of our city even with all of its challenges, and I'm proud to live in and fight for District Three. I believe we need to continue to move Richmond forward in a positive direction. I grew up here during the height of the war on drugs. I saw every single kid I grew up with in the seventies and the eighties get killed through drive by shootings. I know that it's better than what it was, and I know also that we need to continue to move in that positive direction. We need to make it safe. We need to make the air clean. We need to create jobs. We need to create the kind of economy that's stable and sustainable and is looking forward to the future. I have the discipline, experience, patience, and compassion to work with people to collaborate, collaboratively find real solutions to complex problems. I'm endorsed by the Local Firefighters 188, SCIU Union, the Sierra Club, number of current city council members, former mayors, and Contra Costa County Supervisor John Joya. I am honored to earn your vote and work together to nurture the vision for Richmond that which we share. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Now for District Four, Dr. Banner, please make your closing statement. You got two minutes.
Thank you very much again. I'm proud to be here among you tonight. As a mother of two children, I know it takes a village to raise a child. So we need to bring all the agencies and all the stakeholders in this community together to make sure that our children and our youth can build their future and can make a better future for themselves. Also, as an immigrant, I came here without any support. And I appreciate the value of the resources, connection, opportunities. And I promise to provide those for the youth in the city of Richmond when I'm at the city council. It is very important to bring all those resources, summer jobs, mentorship, a writer's coach, everything from the school to community college to vocational school, all the opportunities and give them the chance to build a future for themselves. It's important to do our best to let the families stay together. Not the children should not have to worry about food, shelter, housing, their parents' job and everything. And I promise to do my best in that regard. I have been concerned about public safety in my community. I delivered. I brought many agencies together and we are getting results on public safety. And I plan to do the same for what I'm talking about with regards to the youth. And I will bring all those agencies from UC Berkeley to parents in the community together to provide mentorship and provide other resources for you guys. I'm very proud of you and I'll do my best for you. Thank you very much for your, for this opportunity and very nice meeting you all. Have a good night.
Mr. Perse, please make your closing statement. You got two minutes.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the ability to bookend this. Well, so I've been, I've been personally knocking on doors for months, and I have reached almost 4,000 doors that I've been knocking on. From countless hours spent speaking with our community, it's clear that I can best advocate for the needs of my district and for the city as a whole, both. I know how to work with all kinds of people. We can push for the things that we need. Crime and wildfire prevention, affordable housing in our city center programs to address the needs of the community, whether that be food, housing, and or what, educational. I am, after speaking with so many people, it makes me really proud of why I'm a corporate free candidate. My campaign is funded by our community because that's who I'm going to answer to. Young families should feel that our city is both safe and affordable. And when most vulnerable neighbors fall on hard times, we want a city government that helps them get back on their feet. I've been involved in the community for over eight years, working at the county level, working at the state Capitol, working at City Hall, working amongst a number of different community organizations. That's why I am endorsed by the Democratic Party, the Sierra Club, two unions that represent the city staff, Local 1021 and Local 21, and electeds like Gabriel Quintos, former Richmond mayor and city council member, Gail McLaughlin, and of course, our county supervisor, John Joya. These leaders have seen me doing the work for so long. They know that I'm going to not just be able to bring representation to my area and over in the Fairmead Hilltop area. But I'm going to make sure that Richmond is going to succeed, and I'm going to put the future of Richmond first. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates for making it today. Thank you for respecting our rules, our times. Now we'll get to the closing statements. We would thank the candidates for their participation tonight and for their willingness to run for this important office. Good luck. We would like to thank our youth, Contra Costa Immigrant Rights Alliance, Richmond Outpark Coalition, and Reimagining Richmond for also helping with the Zoom chat and Healthy Rich, Healthy Contra Costa also helping with the chat and tech. We thank the audience for coming and remember to vote on November 8th and take a friend with you. Thank you all.
Good night, everybody. Thank you so much.